Good call order.
Call order. Hey, what I deleted, you know the why? Just order of signature for over. Just note that we'll have a public hearing to five o five for unanticipated funds. Five, five oh five, five ten. On Elm Street, we need to talk about that.
That's five hundred business.
Let me see, I think there's a second coming. One. Let me get the other holder.
Okay. Shoulder fell out.
Uh, we had two invading requests that was a okay by Avatar. So we signed that up. That was it on the signature board. And approval. Make motion to approve the manifest stated August fifteenth, twenty twenty four in amount of sixty thousand nine forty four point twenty four.
Okay.
All favor.
I, I.
Make a motion to approve the manifest dated August twenty second, twenty twenty four in the amount of sixty one thousand, two hundred and twenty two dollars and eighty five cents.
Sorry. Hi.
All favorite.
Hi.
Make a motion to approve the board of select minutes stated August sixth, twenty twenty four.
Check it.
All favorite.
I, I.
Now we'll go to the man. Uh, first thing, more uh, quote for uh, more Martin salt, but usually we let you talk.
Yeah, we it's just, we usually get three quotes for uh, I went to road salt, so that's just the first one so far. And it looks like. If memory serves me correct, it's down a little bit. I do know that Osby walked in already in there, salt was uh, thirteen dollars or fourteen dollars a ton cheaper than both last.
Good. Uh. We have some points coming in from D L T. From uh. The twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty five for total, four payments gonna be a total of eighty six thousand and five hundred and seventy nine dollars and seven cents, so.
Highway block grant money.
Yeah. Okay. And then we had a one from NHMA. Courses for elected officials. Were you, Joe?
Prime.
Prime X.
Prime X.
Yeah.
Certification.
Uh, board selecting reports, who's first?
I go. Um, started work on a uh, computer support R P for the town office, town. Computer network system. Should have that in a couple of weeks. Met with the historic town hall architect for um, a couple of plan revisions. So that we can get an R P out for the twenty twenty five. Construction presentation work to the town library. Um, street dance, um. We've had the last couple of years, that one's October nineteenth, it's year of the rain day to the twentieth. One of the questions that the friends of the library had is, do the select board have any issues with them holding that in the library parking lot rather than in the streets?
No problem.
Okay, good, I'll give the event form, Caitlin got it to me today, I'll get it over to. Friends of the library to fill out and.
Do we need uh, we have to park across the road and all that?
Yeah, she's working on that, that's what she's planning with her. That, but I think, I don't know if she already talked to Eric, but I, she may have already, I don't know.
We need police presence, I mean, people walk across or cones.
The model we did the other day.
Probably do, probably cones would be good.
We use.
Yes, cones, yeah, other than that, I think will be good. Like we bring it out of state this year, so. Okay. Um, let's see. I mean, we received, or I received word from the town auditor. That the reconciliation we did on the twenty twenty L chip grant. Um, as far as all of the accounting for that was good, he liked the format, so I've now created that format. In a twenty twenty four, twenty five tracking form and started entering information into that. Um, attended a high watch meeting on Friday with the other select board members, police chief, fire chief. It was a meet and greet, a good conversation with the folks up at Fremont and Treatment Center. Um. Did it this Saturday street fair along with a lot of other people, it was a good turnout, a little above average. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Joe.
Uh, first thing is, hopefully this doesn't become the new norm, but uh, would like to start my comments with. Giving my condolences to the family of. Uh, Pat Parsons who passed away night before last. She was our oldest resident in town and holder of the Boston Post Kane. Um. Paul and Janet Bartowitz uh. And Pat were very involved in town as we all know, and um. She worked in this building. When I was in elementary school and was instrumental in. Assisting and advancing kids with their education, um. Many, many years ago, so. Uh, very sorry for the, for their loss and for the loss of Pat. And again, hopefully that doesn't come to the new norm because that's how I started my last selection comments two weeks ago is the unfortunate passing of town residents, so. Hopefully that's a. That's more than I fare share. For a month, um. Uh, just wanted a comment to make sure that we moving forward on our to do list, we haven't had a discussion about that in the last couple of meetings, um, updating our to do list and seeing where we're at. To see what we can put to the to done, um. The street fair I thought was an excellent turnout, I was very surprised. I was glad that I got the entire field mode, I was only gonna mow where people normally park, but. Um, I went ahead and mowed the whole thing and we used the whole thing, so. Um, it was amazing, fantastic turnout for anybody that saw us, we were talking about braces, peanut butter cookies. And Leo's cookies that we didn't get to eat, so it was not an illegal select meeting, what is that, by chance, happenstance meeting, so. Um, we did get called out for that, so. Um.
And I am told you have a bag of cookies waiting for you, she's making them tonight.
Oh, fantastic, glad to hear that. Um. I lost my train of mind, now I'm thinking about the cookies, now I'm thinking about cookies. Um. Uh, update, oh, uh, yeah, some of you may know that the contractor has been working on cleaning up the dishes and erosion control. Um, work on Champion Hill Road. Um, as soon as the weather permits and that project is finished, we'll be moving on to road grading. And if the weather stays dry, we'll be doing some cal- more calcium fluoride application potentially. Um, last Thursday, I went down to Bonning Road, we did, it was a follow up on a complaint about some materials left on the side of the road. Um, not gonna say that it wasn't there by our contractor, there's a little bit that that was from our contractor, but most of it, just so happens it's residence, the first residence in Effingham on Bonning Road. And majority of the material that was piled up there, and I have photos, um. Is from when. The town of Wakefield plows, it's a process, they call it deadheading. It's where you stop plowing, you're snowing, you deadhead and you pick up your plow and you turn around and you go back the other way. Uh, that's created most of it, but we'll uh, work with our contractor to get that mitigated and and cleaned up and. Um, shouldn't be an issue, but while I was out there, I did notice that Bonning Road had gotten. Um, braided and was pretty dusty and I'm glad I didn't spend the. Dollar sixty four gallon calcium fluoride because it would have all washed away, but uh. Grading, grading is gonna continue, we had a washout on Hudson's Bond Road, the contractors are well aware and it's gonna be addressed tomorrow, anybody goes that way. Um. The N M A, N H M A, um, October course, did you look into that?
Yes.
And? Are you making the train?
I was talking to Michelle, we're both.
So there, there's a, it's their yearly training course and um.
Topic?
I think it generalizes government and finance.
Yes, it's their annual. Conference, thank you, the annual conference every year, and it's a. Great opportunity for education, to learn about general operations and finance, all their key speakers are there, it's a two day thing, um. I would recommend that our staff goes. I know our staff has gone in the past. I am attending it, not as with Effingham, but um. Well. Yes and no, I'm paying for the classes, I'm taking it in my pocket, but I'm going with somebody else that is also going as a county employee, so. Um. But I'm signed up to take some of the classes or to sit in on some of the courses and stuff, but I didn't want to burden them. Tell them that if we have the opportunity to take some of that training.
It's a good concentrated. Learning experience and you can learn more than two days and you can scoop up over many, many months, it's well worth going.
And it is also a great opportunity to, um, and I, I can never think of that word, but.
Socialize.
Socialize and interact and meet people that are in light jobs and.
Have connections.
Have connections and.
Networking.
Networking, thank you. That's very good, yeah. Um, so. If you wanna work, I support them going to that.
I supported it too.
Yeah, okay. Um. And I think that's all I have now, as usual, I will come up with something else, I'm sure. Got good sale, though, we did go to Fremont Treatment Center. We did get a small PowerPoint presentation and I believe we're gonna have that posted. To the cloud.
Right, ask Caitlin to do it.
Um, it just gives a brief synopsis of their mission statement and so forth, um. It's kind of reason behind the, the meeting. Is uh, I'm sure this, I know there's some faces in here that attended the public hearing back in two thousand and fifteen when Eric Barford. Turned that over from. A neuro rehabilitation facility or. A substance abuse facility. And uh, you know, the outcry of our public and so forth, and. Um, so we just wanted to meet the new ownership and. Um, have a conversation to see if there's any changes to that mission statement and so forth, and. If they had any questions for us, and it was a great meeting, there'll be a PowerPoint presentation, like I said, being put on there.
Can I just add one thing? Just for any confusion, when they say the cloud, they mean the website, website's town cloud, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Oh, yeah. Not the cloud where everything goes and disappears. And never to be found, but. Heck, I need it for myself.
Great, I have my own stuff, um. Have a voucher here for uh. For the town hall project. And I don't know if you wanna get into it as far as uh.
Sure. So under the historic town hall project. Um, back in two thousand nineteen. Um, to help with fundraising efforts for nonprofits, the town. Uh, and the Effingham Preservation Society entered into a written agreement where the Effingham Preservation Society would be able to collect. Five oh one seat, three charitable donations specifically for the historic town hall project. The document that was put together, the town signed was a template that was provided by the Attorney General's Office to the town. And we filled in the blanks on our end and and signed that. The process calls for uh, when. The town wants to pay bill with money raised in that event. There's a voucher system that has to be completed. With attachments of the different invoices that are gonna be paid underneath that. That then goes to the uh, Effingham Preservation Society, the treasurer of the Effingham Preservation Society then. Writes the check for that, the check then comes back to the town. If the check is greater than ten thousand dollars, it goes through the same process that we have to do for all unanticipated funds. Good news, bad news, it's a fifty thousand dollar check, so even though it'll be signed today, the check will be coming our way today, we still have to have the public meeting. Ten days plus from now to accept the checks or for the deposit.
It'll be September third, that's when we'll be scheduling, so next regular scheduled B O S meeting.
So can you touch a little bit on the process, we changed the process a little bit as far as.
Sure, um, so. Working with the um, the C P A from a tracking standpoint, from an accounting standpoint for the town. Um, QuickBooks isn't exactly designed for town municipal government tracking anyway, even worse for grant tracking. So when the town auditor was in here earlier this spring. I met with him about tracking systems for grants. He recommended using an Excel sheet, which is actually what I have been doing anyway for the last five years, but he recommended some improvements to that, which we did. Um, he actually had me reconstruct the twenty twenty L chip brand. Over a three year period, which we did and submitted it to him, he approved that last week. We're using that format going forward. What we will do. Is basically we will have the bills coming in from the different contractors for the project. We'll submit those bills in, those bills will get paid once a month. I'll prepare one of these sheets with anything that's related to reimbursements by E P S, attach the invoices, it'll come before. The select board meeting here, two selectmen have to sign it, then it's given to the treasurer, treasurer writes a check coming back to the town. And again, if it's in excess of ten grand, we do a, a public hearing on that and accept the funds.
I can't sign it because I'm pressured, so.
So the, the. The guideline requires two select board signatures, not three, but Chris and I are actually the ones that are signing that right now for transparency standpoint.
So it goes, the only monthly is first uh, towards the end of the year, we're using the general fund to pay the bills upfront. Now we're gonna not u- utilize that fund, we'll be paying, we'll have the money up in the account, paying for it. So, there's a check.
Or is my health support?
Yeah, there, okay. Go ahead. Yes. Hold on, hold on, Rosemary, can you? Repeat yourself a little louder.
Since the, the money will be coming from the general fund until the voucher system comes through to pay. Okay. Now, is that gonna be tracked to make sure that all of the money coming out of the general fund will be paid by the voucher, in other words. Ten thousand dollars is taken from the general fund and it's paid to the vendor, now the vendor then sends a bill. And the bill is then checked off, okay, now let's say that bill is. Uh, seven thousand dollars. Okay. We're already taking ten thousand, who's gonna keep track of how much money, when you. How much money is coming out or going back into the general fund to pay back that initial?
I know.
Then the.
So, so there's actually two components to what you're asking. So you remember when you're doing your budget committee stuff, and there's a bunch of the actual, there's a seven thousand grants line on the back?
Yes.
The name of the grant, there's an income and an expense line. So when the check is written by the town, it's gonna cross through this area. In that avenue. The detailed tracking behind that will be Excel format, which I'm keeping. With a copy that comes to Michelle every couple of weeks, so she's got a copy of that. What we're doing on the Excel sheet, and this is where it was recommended by the auditor. I'm putting invoice numbers, check numbers. Dates we received the invoice, dates we paid the checks. So that there's a full accounting, so at year end, when the auditor comes through the door, we can just basically say, here it is. Everything's here, so then the in and out on this sheet matches everything that's on the Excel sheet. So, and that was his recommendation to use it that way. Yes.
Slip by and.
That's why we're doing it, man.
That's something. On certain things now. Correct. This is one of the things you can use. So there's, there's things that are, you know you're gonna get it, like the block grant money, we know we're gonna get that, so we put that in the, through the budget process, that gets included in anticipated revenues. And that goes on the M S four thirty four. Right?
Three, four, three.
Four thirty.
Thirty ten.
I don't know, the numbers are all changed over the years, but, um, so anyway, that gets put on a revenue form. So you can't really count that, you can't spend that money because you, whatever. So yes, these are grants and things like that, that you can spend when they can answer what's a wash, just like the FEMA money, which we verified and. When. When we, after our public hearing tonight. Some of that money is going to reimburse expenditures we've already had, which you will see again in our financials as a. As a uh, uh, income, thank you. I always want to see invoice, I kept saying it yesterday, and Michelle was going, it, as an income. So you have income and outgoing. Two different lines and five thousand and same seven thousand, so.
Yeah, and the reason the grant seven thousand is important with the income and expense with the same name is for multi-year tracking of grants. Cause our, our operating budget is an annual January twelve thirty one, everything zeros out. The grant stuff doesn't zero out till it's done. But it doesn't follow the same municipal accounting part of it, and that's why this process is put into play with the CPA's guidance, make sure we're doing it correctly.
Any other questions? Right. Um. Make one.
I think. Alright, so. Um, received payment to redeem um, a deed of property by the town. That I'll be working on processing the deed to go back to that um, taxpayer. Then we'll have Leo sign as the chair. Um. Been preparing the M S four thirty four to get that for the deadline for D R A, which will be September first. Um, also preparing for budget season and gathering all the stuff for our budgets and getting prepared for what's coming. Um. I will be sending out budget sheets to department heads and boards. Tomorrow, which means tomorrow on Thursday, so just keep an eye out and I'll also have. The budget schedule attached to show when you'll be presenting to the board of selectmen and the budget committee itself. Um. I will be taking a virtual course next Wednesday through NHMA. To go over tax dating processes and navigating any taxing traps. That's only an hour, it's virtual, I'll have it here, um. And then, I can't read my handwriting. In September, both Michelle and I will be taking a budget and finance workshop, we're taking separate days, so now closures to our office, she'll be going to. The um, in-person training in Littleton, I'll be taking a virtual one, which is offered of following Monday.
Was that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this is. Library trustee. F M board, let Public Library Board Trustees accepted the resignation of Nicole Peralt from the Library Board of Trustees. She, they're recommending an alternate trustee here, Greystone, so the vacancy of the board until next election. The board's recommending the appointment of Nicole Perrot as an alternate to the board, so I'm switching messages. Need to vote on it?
I made a motion to. Accept.
Just, just, so did you, I didn't hear correctly, so, area to treasurer.
Oh, I didn't, it doesn't say areas.
Okay, doesn't mention treasurer.
Didn't say, I'm not gonna say that because I'm reading exactly what it said.
That's what I'm asking, that's what I'm asking.
I make a motion to accept the. Recommendation of Eric Greystone to full member of Library Trustees. And for the movement from full member to alternate of Nicole Perrot.
Second.
All favor.
Hi.
In the.
Let me get the seat first shoulder. Um.
You're gonna skip the chief?
Yeah, I just love to do this first.
So we, yeah. So we received the, we received the uh, concern from a landowner, um, bought some property. That was filled, their property being filled in on Elm Street, um, that this was something that was done during the reconstruction of Elm Street last year. Between the two entrances, the Lost Valley and the opposing side of Lost Valley, um, on Elm Street, it was kind of a low area. The contractor lost some of the material when he dug out. When I say lost, it's, he got rid of some of the material we didn't feel would be an issue, it was kind of a dangerous area, um, right off the edge of the pavement, it sloped off into a gully right there. Um. So we filled it in and the landowner is not happy about that, so I'll be meeting with the contractor. Uh, to mitigate the situation and pull some of it back, so. That's that.
Pete.
Right. We have a number of discussions about the vehicle that Madison has available for purchase. Um. To back up a little bit, the current command vehicle was purchased as a somewhat temporary measure to get us through. Get us into a vehicle and and get us a couple of years, when we purchased the vehicle, we paid seven thousand dollars for it. Um, and at that time I was working two days a week or so, so it was a vehicle although older than we thought we could get a few years out of. Uh, vehicle's still in okay shape, but it's starting to need work, it needs a lot of rust work, we think the brake master cylinder's gone at this point. It needs brakes all around, so on and so forth. Um, overall, it's just not holding up well now that I'm working four or more days a week at this point. Um, I identified a vehicle available in the town of Madison, um, it's a current police vehicle that they're looking to get rid of, it's not fitting their, their needs as a police vehicle. Basically, it's not a patrol rated vehicle, it's just a standard pickup truck. They're having trouble turning it to pull over cars and things like that. Uh, it's twenty twenty one, it has just over twenty thousand miles.
What kind of pickup truck?
It's a Chevy Silverado.
So the mileage.
Forty forty.
Over twenty or over forty?
It's just over twenty.
Okay.
Oh, we're twenty.
Okay. It's still in active use as of this very minute, so I'm sure that's changed a little bit, but it's between twenty and thirty thousand miles. Um, the vehicle will come to us with a majority of the equipment left in it, things like the consoles and some of the light wiring and stuff like that, so if we were to purchase it, it'll make. That outfit for me a lot easier.
How much would you estimate that cost?
The outfit, the outfit, um, we do it in-house, so it would just be parts.
Which is.
A few thousand dollars, yeah.
Couple thousand.
Some of it we have on hand and it'll depend on what we can take off the old one and move over.
And when you say a couple thousand, that's high end estimation?
That is a high end estimate, I'm guessing, cause like the radio console that can.
Yeah, it'll move over and.
Yeah, and they're, they're one that's in it currently, we'll say, so we won't even need to move that over. So, yeah, that's a high end estimation, um, obviously all the lights on it are currently blue, so that's where that cost will come in, we gotta change some of that stuff over, so. Um, the vehicle is valued at thirty thousand, that's the intermediate price on Kelly Blue Book, and that is also their asking price.
Know, know the negotiations and.
It's the intermediate cost, so it was the number that they threw out initially.
Better with that price, I know. I had always concerned, cause I was told that the mileage was at least double that.
I, I heard you say that.
Alright. They still essential brand now, so.
Right.
He's had additional. That's why, so there's gonna be the question of where the money would come from. So.
So I'm proposing that it come from the Fire Department Equipment Trust Fund. Um, I have reached out to NHMA Legal Counsel, they defined the word equipment. And they classified that that does include vehicles used for the fire department, that would be considered a piece of equipment.
That would be on the trust fund, right?
Yes.
And how much is in there now?
Uh, there's currently sixteen thousand and ten dollars, and we're pending twenty thousand from previous town meeting.
And Michelle knows that, right? To transfer twenty thousand. We're gonna do it anyway. So it'll give us thirty six thousand, ten dollars.
That'll leave us ten, uh, excuse me, six thousand dollar. In that, in that fund, should we need to purchase anything else, but I don't foresee anything at this point.
Don't, what we do for the interesting vehicle.
Um, ultimately, that would be up to the board, my recommendation at this point, and again, it's valued at eight thousand dollars, which is a thousand dollars more than we paid for it. I would suggest that it goes up to that.
I would like to keep it, I think I expressed that to you, uh.
Yep.
And. And. For use for the road agent position that we have pending, so. It already has the town of Effingham on it, we could leave a couple of the lights that are on it and change the lenses from red to amber. Um we wouldn't have to pay mileage. So we've already invested the seven thousand dollars in.
It's gonna take the. Thanks. The brakes and some of the other stuff.
The rust repair would be the difficult part, that's gonna have to go to somebody outside.
Uh but is it showing the rust and is it through?
Yeah, it's coming through on the.
Through yet, so it's not in the can of spray foam.
That's the difficult part there. Um the remaining mechanical stuff, I would feel pretty confident that Tyler could fix that in-house under the cost of parts.
Brakes.
The brakes and potential the master cylinder.
I just think so that those items right there are going to. Drop the valuation of penetrating on the bid, so it's almost worth it to us just to keep. For our own use for, like I said, depending road agent. Cause then then it is going to be, cause I mean we pose that as a twelve to fifteen hours a week and. Would be paying mileage outside of that, so. Equipment could go into it, chainsaw, chaps, helmet.
Alright. Unanticipated funds. So, alright, read this. The selection will hold a public hearing. Pres- uh prescribe for RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B section three for purpose of accepting funds. From the state of New Hampshire for amount, any amount of twenty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-three cents.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
Second.
On favor?
Seem as I.
We'll have to wait.
As far as the disposal of the current vehicle, that's up to the board, I it doesn't matter to me either way. Uh you know, I think Chris is right, there is value in the vehicle still, I think the use case is different, he's not doing emergency response and things like that, you know. Starting at cold, then immediately running it hot, you know, lessening the lifespan of a vehicle like that, like I am currently. So I think the use case is different, I think the lifespan would be better. And we probably can do a lot of the work in-house.
Yeah, if you love this, wear a tear on it, you know, just run down.
Yeah.
Entertaining motion. As far as Madison.
I make a motion to purchase the, or make an offer. To purchase a former police cruiser from the town of Madison for no more than thirty thousand dollars. For the use for the fire department.
On favor? Thank you. That's all we need, right? Four minutes.
Just add that, but what happened is we'll get on the next. For that twenty thousand. And then it'll be the same thing that happens.
Yeah, I'll give our calls.
You have two more minutes.
You're supposed to talk a little longer.
I'm sorry, our boat has arrived. So Tyler went down to North Carolina. And retrieved our boat. Um explained to. Yep, it's a sixteen-foot inflatable Zodiac. Um sixteen-foot inflatable Zodiac, it'll hold ten people, it's a true rescue boat, it's made for rescuing people out of bodies of water. Um boat, thirty thousand dollar boat to buy it new. So and we got that at no cost to the town as part of the federal excess property program. Um our the only expense was the fuel for Tyler to get down and back. Okay, so that's about four, five hundred dollars.
Alright, we're gonna do the second one.
It was afforded, we went two hundred, three hundred dollars.
Unanticipated funds, five oh five. Purposcribe for RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B section three for the purpose of. Making a motion for the purpose of accepting funds from. The assistance of the firefighter's grant in the amount of sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents.
Yes, so that was a motion, second.
On favor?
Alright, Seem as I.
You have to vote to.
Um so this is the assistance of the firefighter's grant, it's a federal grant that's done annually, um it's a highly competitive grant and every year the. The pool gets smaller, so there's more, there's less and less money offered every year and more and more applicants every year. Naturally, everything is getting more expensive, so people are looking for these other means to fund things like fire trucks and whatnot. Um we took a grant narrative that had won back in twenty seventeen roughly, we modified the narrative to fit. Our current need and we were awarded the grant, uh there was only a handful of uh fire departments in New Hampshire that have been awarded so far and we made the cut. Uh this will allow us to replace all of our aging fire hose, we've got some stuff from the EDS that's still in service. So we'll be able to replace all that with brand new stuff as well as some new nozzles and things like that, water delivery appliances.
Thank you very much.
Fire. Fighter terminology, water of finance.
Grand money, can it go into, go where they go with their general fund, this one?
I feel like you gotta leave.
Uh no. I don't think it has to. It wasn't anticipated in the second grant, right?
Right.
That he wrote. So by.
Can you encompass that as well?
Uh yes, you can.
Um for the next board meeting, we will have an RFP ready because it meets that threshold as well. So an RFP for the equipment.
So I have to put in uh five times.
Seven.
Seven thousand?
Did you use it, would that grant, you use it in a twenty period extended? Twenty-four months would be adequate?
Yeah, I think it's twenty-four months if I remember correctly.
Okay.
Uh I haven't hit accept on the grant, so I don't have all those terms yet, I had to wait for.
All we gotta do is basically open it up. And then he can do the RFP when we get it in, just pay it against that.
Yeah, then two minutes to talk.
Well, say something, where have you been?
I was at swearing into the new Madison police chief. They gave uh chief K, he'd retire and some uh the primary gifts of a little ceremony.
So your your demonstration with Desi.
Yes.
On Saturday.
Yeah.
Was fantastic.
Yeah, it went pretty well.
And a lot of people came specifically just to see her do her thing and left right after that.
Uh for the cookies? Next year is gonna be a little bit bigger and better, I'm hoping, gonna make some phone calls, but we're gonna try to do a. Maybe an inner vehicle deployment with her, which is where you deploy inside of a car to extract someone out, so.
That's a little bit different.
It's been using Tyler for that.
That's what I find hopes is to do that for next year. A little bit of a, a bit of a setup.
The man, Eddie Krachin, Krachin that morning is the volunteer.
Did he realize how close she was to the end of that glove?
I don't think he did.
Okay. He moved his arm just as she got there. No, yeah, we got some good, good public relations out of that.
Anytime anybody, if there's any of the nonprofits that would like a demo, please reach out to me, I love doing them, so. Let's make that public.
And that's pretty easy, just go around. Don't do that, I'm just kidding.
Alright, bye, bye Ted. Bye. Hey, last one, uh unanticipated funds, I make a motion to uh per- prescribe for RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B section three. For the purpose of the second funds. From the state of New Hampshire in the amount of twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and twenty cents.
Make a motion to accept those funds?
I didn't make a motion.
You did. And I'll second that.
On favor?
Seem as I.
Alright.
Hi.
And that one is. That one is. What was that one?
The state of New Hampshire. Twenty-eight with FEMA. I think it just says state of New Hampshire, it's up at the check set.
That's all I said.
Remembrance from the July twenty twenty-three storm, uh there is at least one more check coming from that.
So the twenty-eight thousand is FEMA?
Yes.
Next one is uh.
All the waste account.
Yep.
No, it's still.
Oh, that's some fire chief not done.
You're done? Okay. It's always uh, I'm a treasurer. Um basically. Making a recommendation, we have a current balance in our account. Trust fund of uh for the solid waste treaty. Solid waste facility account of a hundred thousand fifty-six dollars one six. He stated it's only earning point zero two percent for annual yield of about twenty-four dollars a year in interest. Considering the current, the annual inflation rate and approximately three percent of discount is losing about three thousand dollars annually. Due to the inflation, low rate of interest, he's asking the board to consider using a substantial amount of the money in a way that would be more beneficial for the taxpayers. And offers to follow, following options. Uh short-term by month CD at five per, five point zero five percent. Ten-month CD at four point five, longer term capital reserve funds are earning three point two percent at TB Bank. That we're doing that. What's our bank? Oh, I didn't realize that, okay. The account where most of the town liquid funds are maintaining earning two point five is five percent, timely access to the fund should be considered. Some options to consider, close the account, return the funds to the general fund. Buy future rational excess fees to the actual operating expenses, which he called my favorite. Retain, I would assume it's looking my favor from reducing taxes. So retain a lesser amount and return a portion to the general fund. Retain a portion and place the excess in a transfer, station recycling CRF. Trust fund. Place the whole amount of new C in the new CRF and continue placing collective fees in account until a specific amount is accumulated. And use these to directly offset transfer station operating costs. Change it, change that account and use for a completely different purpose, maintain that status quo or utter.
So that was a second warrant article. Set up as a special reserve fund. Funds can only be extended from that account.
How many years ago?
Three, I believe, or four.
So four years we made, we, a few of the ninety thousand dollars?
Yep. Funds can only be extended from that fund at a county. The original purpose of that fund was to set up for future. Transfer station improvement efforts, whatever those might be, whether it's building, equipment. Or anything else, as long as you're really on the transfer station.
So how's the funds getting to this account?
Was any, any of the fees that are paid. At the transfer station or any demo or anything like that, a hundred percent of those fees go into this town. Because it was felt that those that was generating. That would help fund future expansion efforts, or we wouldn't have to come back to the town for asking them for money for. Equipment or buildings or anything else. That money can also be used to be matched against grants. So when the first year when we did that, there was actually a fifty thousand dollar DES permit we could have gone after. Which required one for one matches of money. So the money that's there is potentially matchable, the whole for the whole. I guess, whatever project might.
So look at the future for the transfer station, what? The long-term projects, I would look at.
Compactors being, have, having to be replaced.
And.
Is one.
Compactors.
Uh how old are consistent roof factors?
One, one of them was brand new, one of them was secondhand. The secondhand one's been repaired less than the brand new one.
I know, we just had a repair on uh.
Think when we looked at that originally, the used life of them was like twenty years.
And how much did?
They were going for like forty, they, now they're going for forty thousand dollars a compactor. But it can be used for other things, it's it's at the transfer station, so if we needed to put up a building for something. Or we wanted to.
We don't need any more buildings.
No, no, I'm just saying, if it's a case we wanted to put something up over the. Compact like we have been discussed, put, put a roofing over the compacters to prevent snow and ice from getting into the open compacters. Which will reduce our shipping costs, which I've gone up, done it since we had that original discussion. Because of weight. So there's different things that it could be used for, I think when we originally were looking at. Building a roofing arrangement over those, that roofing arrangement at time was like seventy or eighty grand. Of which fifty percent of it was gonna be covered by grant, we didn't have enough money in this thing at the time to.
So like the, the CDX and the glass. Metal's not such an issue now. Cause even like Rickers said, when we point blank asked him the questions, like in January. If ninety percent of it is snow load or whatever, they just said, well, you just won't get any money. We'll cover our fuel costs or come and pick up the container if it's pretty full of snow and ice, but you won't get anything, we'll caution you there. And before it was constant. So primarily the CDX, which you pay by the ton, you don't wanna be paying for snow and ice.
Right.
And same with the glass, so we, and we do that a lot now, so for me, outside of. Something catastrophic, ha- catastrophic happening with the containers, a roof structure would be our next investment. Over the, at the transfer station, that would be the next.
I mean, even, even one thing that had been discussed. Loosely in conversation, three, four years ago. Was actually building an extended roof structure over the compacters. To prevent slipping and sliding in the winter time. Cause we've averaged at least one person a year going down and being transported by ambulance. From slipping and sliding.
Sometimes it shifts with one difference.
I, yeah. But, that was.
Cause we're talking about people that fell at the transfer station.
So, yeah, but I mean, there's different things that can be done, with, I mean. Come up with a plan, what's a strategic plan? For the development of it, go after some brands.
So what I'm looking at is from this option that he provided. Um we definitely don't, I mean personally, I don't wanna put that in there.
Well, we can't do it.
Yeah, there's nothing you can do it until town meeting.
Till town meeting, we can't do any of these recommendations, we can't move this money, it has to stay there. It, it, the only option right now.
Put it in the CD?
No, cause.
We can, no, we, we can put it into an investment. A higher rating CD.
Right, you can do that, that's what I'm looking at.
Knowing, I mean, at, at this stage of the game, I would. Knowing we don't have any plans to do any major development of it, I'd do.
Uh not till next year, so.
I do a ten-year CD in four and a half and raise it to offer.
Five months.
Ten months.
Yeah, I would go to five months with four point five percent. At least till next spring, then we can see what's going on.
Yeah.
And uh what amount do we wanna keep in the account?
No, put the whole thing in.
Yeah, but the whole thing.
So if we lose.
You can't get it out of this account. That's why we have the other ETF. In the event we are during the year. When something big that happens, we put the ETF like thirty or forty grand in and out if I remember. Yeah, that's what that was originally for. That other ETF was originally for doing compactors and stuff like that that might blow out during the year.
So do we need a motion to your all three ten month four point five percent? I don't think we need them. Well, we have to.
Because it's an investment, I think.
Make a motion that. We move this being hundred thousand fifty-six dollars one cent. To a ten-month CD at four point five percent. On favor. Just to talking about their transfer station though, we're also. You know, like the that now I did tell supervisors, Mark that no more with men. All answers right like that. There's no need for it, cause there's a cost that's gonna be transported the material. Versus like it was the past, they come, call, pick them up, they come picking up. So it's not a big deal. I rather had the guys walking around, making sure everybody puts the. Bash the right place, glass and everything else.
Part of that hundred thousand fifty-six dollars one cent is the fees that are collected from. People disposing of metal items that we now get paid for. I know that we don't wanna buy the nose off the spider face. It is an income. But we're currently not using that income to offset our expenses per se. It's going into this. We want to have a discussion at any point in time about. Having a public hearing to relook at our. Uh fees of the transfer station.
I would like first to have an understanding of how much from the scrap steel standpoint, how much are we. For a month or for whatever. For a year. So once we have that, you know, what?
Well, we're taking, we're in doing that, taking with the whole thing. We're losing money on tires. We're making money on metal. So we're gonna look at the entire ballot, look at the true run of what we're getting, so the glass, the metal. And the tires, what does it cost us to process all of that stuff?
Yeah, the glass we don't pay. I mean, we don't have the tax for a pay that.
What I can do, if you recall at the end of last year, we had this discussion with NRR about NRA and all that stuff. And I had that at cell sheet. That had each individual. Invoice that we paid. I can do that again. But this time it'll show the income that we're getting from workers.
So the income we get in from the, when Mark brings money in. He doesn't break it out as far as what. What's where it came from?
On the receipt itself, it was going by the department codes that they have. So I just had to get a list of those department codes.
Is that a lot of work?
I don't know yet. I have to look into it.
There used to be a code sheet.
They do have.
In word. It tells you what though.
Yeah, they know what it is. It's just that.
And obviously, I I get your point that we're paying out to dispose of the tires.
Yep.
Propane tanks, appliances, excuse me, when I say appliance, electronics. This money isn't offsetting that now anymore. As we collect that money for the metals, we collect that money for CDX, we collect that money for the transfer station, permits, things like that. That goes into this fund. Which becomes a savings account. But it's not really, so that's an expense that is burdened by the taxpayers anyway through the budget process. So that's gonna be there regardless, and as long as this money, so I just see. I I I don't like the fact that we're. We're tasking our taxpayers with paying for something that the towns consequently get paid for in return.
The. Wait, when you look at the whole original design, you have the thing is address the original strategy of why that fund was developed and see if it's still applicable.
Yeah.
Yeah, we knew that there needed to be some. Major heavy costs in the in creation of like roofs and stuff like that. That we didn't wanna fund and ask the taxpayer for because of having raised taxes. This was a way to over several years, raise the money. When you get ready to do that, you had the money, go after the grants, between the two of them. You extend your funds, you did not have not have to raise any more from the taxpayer.
I don't, I'm not looking at eliminating all the fees. I'm looking at once, like the scrap steel.
Yeah, cause I mean, like the scrap steel, you're so fast. There are refrigerators in the um A A conditioning unit, still have to get, you know, they start and then get a free on, and there's a fee for that. But then that, once that's done, then it becomes. You know, money, it becomes crap. So I just, you know, I I'll just open up the dialogue to see if we, we if we wanna have that conversation.
Yeah, let's start with that first. Uh see if you can, what type of work with. Involved by the Heidi, something maybe you can do or, you know. Put a lot of information together. And then Google for there for discussion.
Can you just request that report from NRA or you have to create it yourself?
You know, they're looking at the receipts they're coming in. The marketing's the money. I wanna break down from all the money. Where's it going? Fridge?
I I. So they used to be a break. Okay, so it used to be broken down. We must not be doing that anymore.
Not through NRA because we don't.
Even internally in the office here, we used to keep it tracked. So we must not be doing that anymore.
I tracked it last year, or you're talking the bills that came from NRA or?
Or or even with 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 all the different codes that were in here? With the twenty-something codes that were in there?
I've never seen something like that, so no.
Chuck, get it in NRA is that. Waste management and all that.
I understand the codes.
And we don't, but we don't, we're just members with NRA now. We're not, they're not facilitating everything like we're using it. Cause I mean, last year, we spent twelve thousand dollars so that they could manage us spending nine thousand dollars in tipping fees. And instead, we pay a hundred and thirty-three dollars for a membership roughly. So that we get a deal on disposing our class. That's it. I don't know, so, so we're looking at just basically what our uh codes are done at the transportation.
Yeah, that's something definitely I can then how how you gather with the codes and.
Yeah, now give us better.
Yeah, cause I mean, when we used to track the like tire code, we could tell what size tires we were doing because there were a couple of different tire codes in there. And some of the other codes, and we would, at at one point had been tracking all the individual codes and know what we're getting for revenue.
And we can, we can show that against what we pay to get rid of the tires too, so it's just a. Okay, well, that, and with the new accounts, we would like the tires go over to different vendor.
Yeah.
Besides what we had before. There used to be, you, there used to be a size maximum.
Right.
That no longer exists. If somebody, if a taxpayer has a tire that they wanna pay to get rid of, we can get rid of any tire size, any size tire. Whenever you used to be able to do that.
Okay, we used to charge different prices besides tires.
To turn side.
Yeah, to turn tires, but there was a map, you know, and then it maxed out. We couldn't get rid of like skidder tires, big trucks and tires, couldn't get rid of those. Now, if that actually wants to. By the, by the unit, whatever it costs on this to get rid of it. To get rid of. And and we haven't run into that yet. Nobody's.
Okay, wait, that means we haven't modified the policy.
So that's the thing, we, that's, that's an option, but we still have to update our policy, which what requires a public care amendment. So that.
Yep.
What I'm getting at is, there's more to discuss besides shift the metal. There's also accepting propane tanks and things like that, so. Cause we have a different vendor for that now, things that we can get rid of. The small ones, twenty-five, thirty-five. Forty-five, hundreds.
We can't, we didn't find anybody.
Uh. No. Yeah, I I'm gonna say no, yes, no.
Okay.
Oh. Sorry, I'm getting off.
Yeah, the last thing that's in transfer station, you'll be seeing that uh the chat where Bill's works, put all those tools, that's gonna be done. That's being abolished. Any tools they have, it'll be put it into the container, they'll put the shelves in there, put it in the new container. So open that area up a little bit.
There's something transfer station related if I may.
Sure, please.
Um, smoke detectors have become a hot topic lately. Um, I've had a lot of people ask some questions about how we can get rid of them. Mark's not taking them. They cannot go into the landfill and consider damaging his materials, but we provide no way for anybody to get rid of them. I don't know what's out there for resources. I've been trying to start. Scratching around and see what other places are doing.
Anyone accepted if the household has a question.
So the L R P C site, when I was in there a few weeks ago, put some links with some other sources, and one of them was for that, but I did not.
Can't contact the manufacturer and some of them ship them back to the manufacturer, they'll take them. But um I actually got a call from a guy today saying he called the manufacturer, they said no thanks. So I will make a phone call tomorrow. Um, so our option for our residents to get rid of anything that would normally go to household hazardous, yes, there is an expense. Since that goes along with it, like there isn't anything, but the town of Wake, uh the town of Wolfboro, um you know. Latex pad, oil-based paints, fluorescent lights, things like that. If you're willing to pay, you can go to the Wolfboro transfer station and pay the fee. So I'll call them and ask them if. Smoke detectors is is one of those things. Yeah. So I just like to come up with an option to give these people. Right, especially since how there's a recommendation that they get replaced every so often, every ten years. So you wonder where they. Yeah, thank you. I'll let you know.
Yeah, when you were talking about the hazardous waste day.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Go for it.
And I said I was getting off topic, so. Did we find out, how many did we ask? Um how many people went? Okay. Anybody here attend the household hazardous waste day in Wolfboro on the fifth, uh third of August? No? Did I? I don't have any hazardous wastes. I just take it for Leo is probably what I'm telling.
I find that rough pile when I light it. Announcements? What they call me?
Oh. Forgot this earlier. Should've said it when we had time.
Will you take it after?
Yeah, um. The building committee meeting was supposed to be last Friday. We rescheduled because of the high watch meeting. Um, we're gonna try again for this Friday at ten. At the fire station. I was not gonna be there. So this coming Friday at ten.
Wanna put that on the cloud?
Let's write it in, man.
We can't keep kicking that down the road, man. I can phone in. Phone in or draw something on a piece later.
Yeah, I phone in.
Oh, you're you're got it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do better. Public comment. Yes, Lemon?
The other day I was up early last week, one day, uh quite early in the morning. I followed, and I don't know if this is okay or not, come down. Followed a waste management truck down Champion Hill, so all food champion rode down the hill. And I hit down to almost the bottom and another one coming up. Is this something that is still supposed to be happening?
When you say waste man.
They're big trucks.
Those through trucking. We were to see it.
Both of them. I was following him. And he stopped when he see the other one coming up and I'm like. One going down, one coming up.
Can you make a phone call to waste man? One of the officials there.
Suggestion.
Would I please?
Have the police chief. Basically call and warn them. Next time they get.
Were they compactor ones or were they hauling containers?
Black was the one, the big one.
That picks up a dumpster and.
Correct.
Okay.
Had one, you know, it was on and everything else. The other one was a little smaller. He had something on it. I think it was maybe a small dumpster. There was also a black pickup. On that road that wanted, I believe the gentleman that uh built the new house ran along where. Uh Bernard and Bernie, that was how it used to be.
Yeah.
That guy, I I believe. It was him, but I had one.
Okay, so I mean.
Definitely one was.
The reason why, the reason, yeah, the reason why I ask is, it's clear that the waste management that picks up our containers, they go around. It's not that. We know that because they ripped down the communication line. But.
But it is a waste, it's a waste.
But it, but it's it's. They probably think they're exempt because, you know, there's, they have to do dumpster payups. So if they're stopping to pick a dumpster up or they're. And they're doing a roll-off container, that's a caveat, so.
Do we gotta have the chief call this, or we just had people call first?
He had his hand up, so. I was just gonna say, I had seen him doing dumpster pickups and drop offs for like home demolitions, or some people actually add them to their house. Cause the truck will come around and then. Cause I do know that there's a container, a revolving container and a residence on Champion Hill. Not saying that's where it was going.
Right.
Like maybe the one coming up. I'm just saying there can be a reason, and there are two containers that.
Could be, but the one coming up. Looked like the one I have seen. Oh, I have. Yeah, the one that would be going on to the truck. The other one, no, not so much, but it was. He had something on.
What what I mean by revolving container, so there's a thirty or forty yard, which is what we put our. Dumpster material shingles and that sort of thing, the CDX at the transfer station. There's a revolving one that is getting rotated and in a property on Champion Hill Road. Cause they're cleaning up.
Maybe.
And then you have dumpsters where people have thrown the household trash that follows. Yeah, the smaller dumpsters, you would see that guys. So, but.
I I mean, you don't, you.
I had no problem just uh calling them and have a friendly reminder. If they're doing pickups, obviously, it's fine. But uh just remind them that their drivers.
Okay, totally, but I have to keep.
Do you remember what day of the week that was?
I said, I said.
Just an answer. Thank you. Any more?
Tango's in Bell last week. My granddaughter had a fly fire. She had to go to school, so I had to go over. So.
Any other public comments?
Not seeing any comments. Uh we're gonna go into non-public. RSA ninety-one dash eight colon three, comma two, person that. Thank you all for coming.
That was a motion, right?
Yes.
Soon as I.